Good afternoon, everyone. We're here today to discuss what the nomination of Gina Haspel for CIA Director means for where the United States stands on torture and what you can do to help the Center for Victims of Torture stop her from becoming CIA Director. My name is Pete Gross and I'll be moderating today's town hall on the nomination of Gina Haspel for CIA Director. I'm Director of External Relations and I've been with CBT for more than 20 years. Our hosts today will be Scott Ream, Director of CBT's Washington Office, and Yasmeen Tab, CBT's Senior Policy Counsel. We'll hear from them on why CBT is so adamantly opposed to Gina Haspel's nomination and we'll invite questions throughout the call. I'll note at the outset that this is only the second time in CBT's nearly 33-year history that we have opposed a presidential nomination. If you'd like to post a question to Scott and Yasmeen at any time during the call, press star three. If you'd like to sign up for our e-newsletter or make a financial contribution to support our work, press star six. So again, that's star three if you'd like to ask a question and star six to sign up for the newsletter or to make a contribution. So now I'll turn it over first to Scott for some background information on why CBT is opposing this nomination. Scott?
Thanks very much, Pete, and thanks to everyone on the phone for joining us today. So who is Gina Haspel? She spent essentially her entire career at the CIA. She is currently the number two person there, the Deputy Director. And that career has been credibly reported to have included deep complicity in torture. As many of you, I'm sure, remember, in the aftermath of the September 11 terrorist attacks, the CIA built a program to interrogate suspected terrorists that involved setting up a series of secret prisons around the world kidnapping essentially suspected terrorists and bringing them to those quote-unquote "black sites" and then torturing them in ways that once seemed unthinkable. Men were stripped naked, placed in diapers and changed to the ceiling sometimes for days. They were drowned to the point of near death and some were stuffed in boxes the size of small dog crates for hours on end. That's just a snapshot of the types of abuses that occurred in the CIA's quote-unquote "enhanced interrogation" programs. Now, Ms. Haspel is credibly reported to have played a significant role in that program in two respects. The first is holding at least some sort of supervisory position on-site at one of those CIA black sites in Thailand as reports have suggested when at least one detainee was brutally tortured there. She may very well have had supervisory authority over other aspects of the program. We don't know for certain and I will explain why in just a minute. She's also credibly reported, including by former CIA officials who were involved with the program at the time, to have been an active participant in destroying videotape evidence of the horrors that the program produced. Those were videotapes of some of the torture sessions themselves. The reason we don't know the precise details of when, how, and to what extent Ms. Haspel was involved with the torture program is that much of that information remains classified. The CIA refuses to declassify and release it. But it has not been disputed that she had substantial involvement in running the torture program and again, that she had an active role in efforts to cover it up through the destruction of the videotapes that I just mentioned. Now, many of you may also have seen more recently since Ms. Haspel was nominated to be CIA Director that some former intelligence community officials have defended her in the press. Their defense for her tends to follow the following arguments. She was just following orders at the time. She's a skilled intelligence professional and she's highly respected within the CIA. Of course, none of that is an answer to participation in torture. She could have said no. She could have refused to participate. Instead, she chose to. And before I turn it over to my colleague Yasmeen to talk a little bit about where Ms. Haspel's confirmation process stands, the importance of public opposition to her nomination now and what you all can do to help, I just want to emphasize a few points about the context of this debate decision and why it's so critical that Ms. Haspel not be confirmed. First, on context, the Senate now is being faced with a decision about whether to promote Ms. Haspel, whether she should be indicted or sanctioned professionally or punished in any way, in fact. It's about a promotion. Giving her that promotion to one of the highest and most powerful offices in the U.S. government would unmistakably endorse and reward torture and it would send that message the world over, no matter what Ms. Haspel says during her confirmation process. And recipients of that message will include survivors of torture, men and women that clinicians at CBT see every day as they struggle to reclaim their lives from precisely the kinds of horrors that the CIA torture program inflicted. Now, there's also a very real danger of confirming Ms. Haspel to the job as CIA Director in an administration where the President has openly embraced torture and where the nominee has a track record of having dutifully followed orders. There's no telling what sorts of orders President Trump might give to the next CIA Director, what sorts of activities Attorney General Sessions might determine are lawful and the White House might ask Ms. Haspel to carry out. I'm now going to turn it over to Yasmeen to take it from here.
Great. Thank you so much, Scott, Pete, and to all of you for joining us today for this conversation. So as Scott mentioned, it's incredibly, incredibly important right now for the Senate to hear from as many of you about the nomination of Gina Haspel. So in terms of where we are in the confirmation process, so the Senate is currently in recess. They will resume during the week of April 9th. And what we anticipate happening is the confirmation hearings for Pompeo will go through first and then Gina Haspel's confirmation will go through thereafter. And if at any point during that process anything changes, we'll certainly keep you informed. And in terms of the committee that Gina Haspel's confirmation will go through is the Senate Intel Committee. But the reason why it's incredibly important to have public opposition to her nomination is that senators need to know and feel that this vote is a referendum on torture. Ms. Haspel is currently making her case privately to senators. What we need every single person on this call to do, and there are several, several hundreds of you on this call right now, we need you to call the Senate every single day until Ms. Haspel's confirmation goes through. And the number to that is 202-224-3121. Again, the phone number is 202-224-3121. That's the number to the capital switchboard. Please put that in your cell phone and call the Senate every single day to let your senators know that you need them to oppose Ms. Haspel's nomination. We need you to attend committee town hall to voice your opposition and this is a perfect opportunity for you to do so as the Senate is currently in recess. We need as many op-eds and letters to the editors being written all across the country. And if you need assistance with getting op-eds placed, writing a letter to the editor, to your local newspaper, please don't hesitate to contact CBT for assistance and you can certainly contact me directly. And my email is Y, G as in Tom, A as in Apple, E as in Edward, B as in Boy, at cvt.org. And in terms of our top targets, and this is just broadly speaking, so because the confirmation hearing is going to go through the Senate Intel Committee, Senator Feinstein is absolutely key. Senator Warner from Virginia, who's the Vice Chair of the Committee, is absolutely key. And Senator Schumer also in particular, as leader, minority leader for Democrats, we need as many of his donors, grass top leaders in New York, you know, his colleagues in the Senate, his colleagues in the House of Representatives, we need him to hear from as many folks in the grassroots as possible to ensure that he gets his entire caucus in line to oppose her nomination. This is incredibly, incredibly key. This nomination is winnable. All we need is to make sure that Democrats are proposing her and we have already gotten Rand Paul on the record to say that he will do absolutely everything he possibly can to oppose the confirmation.
Thanks, Yasmeen. We'll come back to you in just a moment. As a reminder to people on the call, if you'd like to post a question, please press star three. Press star three to post a question. Now, let's go to some callers. We have with us David Kirby from Philadelphia. David, are you with us now and please ask your question?
Yes, hello. I'm affiliated with Veteran Intelligence Professionals for Sanity and I'm a torture survivor myself. And I'm interested in knowing how veteran intelligence professionals who have spoken out against torture and who have resigned from various agencies can contribute to truth and reconciliation on this subject. I would be very interested, for example, in some kind of work with victims.
Scott, can you take the first part of that question? Are there former military and intelligence officers involved in the debate over Ms. Haspel's nomination and how could Mr. Kirby become involved?
Sure. And first off, thanks very much for the terrific work that your organization does. We all see it, we're aware of it. It makes a significant difference. I know that the organization already makes its views known to members of Congress, to the press. Continuing to do that is critical. I think this links both to Ms. Haspel's confirmation and to your question about truth and reconciliation more broadly. I think speaking out publicly and talking privately to younger service members about what quote-unquote "following orders" is supposed to mean, why torture is not an order that should be followed, to educate them about our post-9/11 history, some of those young service members were now at a point where either not alive or barely born when this dark chapter in our history occurred. And I think there's a real missing sense of what the world, particularly from a U.S. perspective, looked like pre-9/11 versus post-9/11 and in particular with respect to the United States' role in torture.
To be clear, I'm not a former intelligence officer. I'm just affiliated with the group. I'm not a full member of the group. I just wanted to kind of get that on the record there. But thank you very much for your answer to my question. And I was in the anti-apartheid movement and I think TUTU's Truth and Reconciliation did so much to heal that country.
Thank you very much, David. We appreciate the call and the questions and your support. Now, let's go to Helga Gutman calling from Pennsylvania. Helga, what is your question for Scott? Helga, are you with us?
I'm right here.
Okay. What is your question, Helga? I think that we may have lost Helga. Let's try one more time. Helga, are you there? Sorry, we're going to have to move on to another question. Let's ask Susan Boington from Lowell, Massachusetts, has a question here that she'd like us to read. "What can the public do to stop the CIA from waterboarding? Are the people being waterboarded in Guantanamo or are there others?" Scott, could you take a stab at that? What can the public do to help the CIA, help stop the CIA from waterboarding?
Sure. And thanks very much for the question, Susan. So making your opposition known to Ms. Haspel's confirmations and having her confirmation fail or be withdrawn would be an awfully powerful signal to the administration, to future administrations, to the agency, that this is not a path down which the public is going to allow the CIA to go again. And given that the person who's been nominated to be CIA Director has, you know, deep complicity in torture in the past, as Yasmeen said previously, this vote becomes a referendum on torture, not just should we have, the U.S. have engaged in it in the first go-around, but is it something that should ever be contemplated going forward? And I think if Ms. Haspel's defeated, it will send a very, very clear signal that the answer to both of those questions is no.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Let's now go to Mohammed Ibrahim El Ghadi in Amherst, Massachusetts. Mohammed, are you ready with your question?
Yes, I'm ready. I already recorded my question. But my question, there is a photo, a picture of Ms. Haspel torturing Iraqi prisoners on the social media, especially on Facebook. So as a torture survivor myself, I have a feeling this is more like Photoshop. I don't want to circulate it on other like torture survivor websites and then it will be found like lying. So I'm just wondering what's your take on this because is it true or Photoshop?
Great. Thank you, Mohammed. Yasmeen, have you seen this photo circulating on Facebook and would you like to respond to that question? It sounds to me like it's a photoshopped image, but maybe you've seen it.
I think it would be best if Scott responded to that question.
All right. Scott, have you seen that photo circulating?
I haven't seen the photo circulating and I haven't heard of it and I can't say anything definitively one way or the other. My instinct, given how little information, specific information like this is public about Ms. Haspel's time at the CIA, is that it is likely not an accurate photo. But I think the context of that answer is critical, right? The CIA, several days ago, went on Twitter campaigns in favor of Ms. Haspel's confirmation, talking about all kinds of unclassified details that make her seem like, you know, a very smart, very sophisticated, very sort of good person and one who should be confirmed to this job. Well, at the same time, all of the precise details, like any pictures that may remain, any videotapes that may remain, all of the detailed cables that explain what she knew, what she did, all of that remains classified. So while the CIA can make its case based on all of this, I call it innocuous information, but information that in the minds of members of Congress might make Ms. Haspel seem like an awfully good choice for CIA Director, the members of Congress who know the record best on the Senate Intelligence Committee can't speak to the reasons why she shouldn't be confirmed because their hands are tied by the CIA's unwillingness to declassify information. And that, to me, seems profoundly undemocratic and unfair.
Great. Thank you, Scott. As a reminder to people on the call, if you'd like to ask a question, press star three. If you'd like to receive our e-newsletter or make a contribution to CBT, press star six. So again, if you have a question, it's star three. Let's go now to Naomi Atrouben from Rochester, Minnesota. Naomi, are you with us? Are you with us and could you ask your question, please?
I wondered whether she had denied that she was in charge or giving orders for the torture or whether she actually did the torture. I think what I knew of the news is that she denied that she was directly involved.
Yes, and I think that that is one of the matters that is in dispute right now. Scott, could you respond to Naomi on that?
Sure. There were some very specific allegations about Ms. Haspel's role in the torture of one particular detainee in a news report that got picked up by a lot of other news outlets that the CIA asked to be corrected. And what they said was she is not the person you are reporting on with respect to that one particular detainee. Ms. Haspel has not said anything publicly about her role in any of this. She's communicating that privately to members of Congress, but she has not said anything publicly. There has been no dispute or correction, however, about whether Ms. Haspel had a meaningful participatory role in the torture program of some sort, even if we don't know every specific detail, or that she was an active participant in helping to cover it up by destroying videotape evidence of the torture. Neither of those allegations, if you want to call them that, have yet been disputed and there have been multiple credible reports on both of them.
Great. Thank you, Scott. And as a reminder to everyone, you're on a tele-town hall conference call with the Center for Victims of Torture. Our content experts today are Scott Ream, Director of CBT's Washington Office, and Yasmeen Tab, CBT's Senior Policy Counsel. Let's go now to Annie Callahan calling, not sure from where. Annie, are you with us and could you ask your question?
Yes.
Annie Callahan?
Yes, calling from Annie's phone. This is Dan.
Dan, what's your question?
My question is, a picture is worth a thousand words and is it possible to have photographs from Abu Ghraib provided to the congressman who are going to be looking at this nomination? Thank you.
Great. Thanks for your question and I think it refers to a cache of photographs that have not yet been released of torture and other acts of cruel, inhuman, and degrading treatment. Scott, do you want to take a stab at that one?
I think the public or widespread release of those photos, you know, in the context of Gina Haspel's nomination is probably not a realistic possibility. I think members of Congress could certainly could and should make more of an issue privately that they ought to get to see them. I suspect there are a handful of members who have. I don't know that for sure. It's just my suspicion. But I also think your question is critically important and revealing of the CIA's decision to destroy videotape evidence of torture sessions and Ms. Haspel's participation in it. As you say, right, video representations, pictures are the most visceral image in some respects and in some ways the most accurate image of what actually transpired. And I think, you know, my own view is those tapes were destroyed because it would have been impossible to maintain the idea that quote-unquote "enhanced interrogation" is something other than brutal torture if those videos were ever more broadly released.
Good. Thank you, Scott. Let's go now to Phyllis Larson calling from Dryden, New York. Phyllis, are you with you and could you please ask your question?
Well, I'm still here and my question was the kinds of torture because there are all sorts and degrees of torture. Do we have places where we can know those?
Yes, so let's answer that question in two ways. Scott mentioned some of the torture techniques that were employed at the black site prison in Thailand that Ms. Haspel directed and Scott, in just a minute, I'm going to ask you to run through those again. But Phyllis, when we talk about torture, we use the United Nations definition as expressed in the U.N. Convention Against Torture and I'll just read the first part of it. "Torture means any act by which severe pain or suffering, whether physical or mental, is intentionally inflicted on a person for such purposes as obtaining from him or a third person information or a confession, punishing him for an act he or a third person has committed or is suspected of having committed, or intimidating or coercing him or a third person for any reason based on discrimination of any kind." So it's the intentional infliction of physical or mental pain and suffering by one person onto another person. Scott, could you run through some of the torture techniques that were alleged to have been perpetrated at that prison and elsewhere in the CIA's post-9/11 torture program?
Sure. And, you know, I think we safely describe these as having occurred and they are described in detail in a report by the Senate Intelligence Committee, the executive, very long executive summary, about 500 pages of which was released publicly several years ago. But they include things like waterboarding, which in practice means laying a towel over someone's mouth, covering their nose, and pouring water down their throat so that not they're experiencing the sensation of drowning, they are actually drowning except stopping before the point that the drowning kills them. Wall slamming, which sounds very much like it is, slamming detainees against what in many of the black sites were concrete walls. Sleep deprivation, again, I think important to understand what that meant in practice. Often, it was stripping a detainee naked, putting him in a diaper, shackling his hands to the ceiling, and leaving him there in cold temperatures with music blasting for hours and hours and hours on end. Some detainees were sleep deprived for 180 hours. These are just the techniques that were authorized and that's not all of them. There were a whole host of abuses that occurred that were not authorized but probably shouldn't have been surprising given the gravity of the evil that was authorized. And I'll give you one example is mock executions.
Thank you, Scott. Let's go now to William Tajab Napis and I hope I pronounced your name reasonably correctly. And are you with us and could you ask your question?
Yes, I am here. And actually, I think my question has pretty much been answered. I had read that ProPublica had withdrawn some of the allegations in their articles specifically having to do with Gina Haspel being personally involved in some manner with the torture in Thailand, but that... manner with the torture in Thailand, but that they stood by that part of their story, that she was involved in the destruction of the videotape. So I believe that that's kind of been answered already, so in the sense that one of the presenters stated that the CIA denied her involvement in Thailand. But if there's further clarification, I'd be happy to hear it.
Great. Thanks very much for that, and that is an issue that we followed very closely over the past week to 10 days. Scott, any other information on the ProPublica withdrawal of that statement?
Yeah, thanks, Pete. And thanks very much for the question, because I do think it's important to clarify. So to simplify this a little bit, ProPublica basically reported three things. That Ms. Haspel was in Thailand in a role where she was in charge of one of these secret Black Site prisons when two detainees were tortured. The first was named Abu Zabeda, the second was Al Nasri. They retracted the reporting that she was the person on site in charge when Abu Zabeda was tortured. They did not retract the portion that she was on site when Al Nasri was tortured. And no one that has published that second piece, that I'm aware of, has retracted it either. ProPublica also reported on the tapes destruction, as you mentioned, and they did not retract that she had significant involvement in that.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Let's now go to, uh, let's see. You have a question here from Lorraine Lyman in Cambridge, Massachusetts. And Ms. Lyman is a longtime supporter of Center for Victims of Torture. And so, Ms. Lyman, if you're listening, best wishes and thank you for supporting our work. Lorraine has liked to ask us a question. "If you knew someone was going to do a terrorist act, wouldn't you do anything you can to find it out?" And this is really a question about, you know, is about the use of torture in interrogations. And Ms. Lyman, I think that we would answer that question in several ways, that first, that torture is illegal, second, that torture is immoral, third, that torture is ineffective, and fourth, that torture makes us as a country less safe. It's been quite well documented that FBI interrogators were obtaining quite excellent intelligence from persons captured in the post-9/11 period. And that information ceased to be forthcoming when the CIA took over the interrogations and installed this brutal program of torture and cruelty. And so, actually, no, you wouldn't do anything. What you would do is you would build a rapport with the person being interrogated, and you would get your best, you would get your best information that way. As a reminder to listeners, if you do have a question, please press star three. If you'd like to sign up for our e-newsletter or make a financial contribution to support our work, press star six. So again, it's star three if you have a question. Let's go now to Donna Katzen in Aptos, California. That's the Santa Cruz area. Doris, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
And what is your question? Great. What's your question today?
Uh, well, I want to congratulate you. I know your organization does good work in this area. But perhaps, maybe at my tender age, I'm not just satisfied with the breakdown of who did what. I'd like to know how we could stop torture, not only of the CIA, the FBI, the Police Department, our jails, our prisons, whatever. Our State Department is just filled with it. Our government is filled. How can we best deal with torture, not only of deleting people from government practice, which is not very easy, but what other methods can we do?
Great. Well, thank you very much for that question. And I would say that from CVT's perspective, and Scott, I'm going to ask you to comment on this in just a minute, you know, a critical element of prevention is accountability for those who perpetrate and participate in torture programs. And it would certainly include, as the subject of our call today, and the nomination of Gina Haspel for CIA Director, would not involve the promotion of someone who is so intimately involved in a torture program. But on the broader question of torture prevention efforts, Scott, would you want to comment briefly on that one?
Yeah, thanks, Pete. And thanks very much for the question. I'd echo what Pete said. And I want to focus on your question about what can we best do in terms of maybe what's the most effective route to getting there beyond trying to secure accountability for past torture. In some ways, the most powerful deterrent, but the hardest one to effectively change is the judicial system and the extent to which it will serve as a check on law enforcement from engaging in these kinds of practices. It's a real mixed record there, the extent to which our current laws work. Changing them in that regard is quite difficult. However, I do think, and this is work that some folks in the US government for several years now have been doing and been doing well, folks who study the science of interrogation, is to try and, trying to sort of bridge this gap between what law enforcement does and what people in the national security world do. The reality is, when any of them are interviewing, interrogating, what have you, the goal is to get the best and most accurate information possible. It doesn't matter if that's aimed at eventually prosecuting somebody or trying to figure out if there's some kind of plot underway. The techniques are all the same, and it is undisputed proven science that the techniques that work are non-coercive, and that when you start to approach the line of coercion, you start to get false information, less information. It just rolls back all of the goals you're trying to achieve. So the more, I think, police and law enforcement can be shown that if you do this above board, you're not just being a rights-respecting, law-abiding, sort of moral individual in terms of how you engage your profession, you're actually, you actually have a much better chance of achieving the professional objective you're aimed at. And there is some cross-training going on right now in that regard. I think more of that, more exposure on the law enforcement side to that science and those practices would be very helpful.
Great. Thank you, Scott. We're going to go now to Rob Crawford in Seattle, Washington. Rob, you have a question that involves, that involves the Mike Pompeo nomination. Just a heads up to Yasmeen, I'm going to ask you after Scott addresses this question, if you could tell us again what callers can do to help stop this Haspel nomination. So, Rob, what is your question?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello? Oh, good. Hi, and thank you for this phone call. So, given the fact that Pompeo also has a record on torture, being in favor of waterboarding, his written response to the Senate Intelligence Committee on his confirmation last year, other statements that he's made that really reveal that he's very pro-torture, why not combine the opposition to Haspel, which is so clear, with the, what we believe is the equally clear record of torture by Pompeo? And there's a premise to my question. Just let me take a moment. I coordinate the Washington State Witches Campaign Against Torture, and we decided to do a campaign here for an open letter that combines both, because we see both nominations in the larger context of President Trump moving us towards a politics of violence, which includes torture, Islamophobia, and war. So we see these nominations, along with Bolton's nomination, of course, his appointment, as a strong signal that we're at a turning point and we need to stand up against the whole thing. That's the background to my question.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for the background and thanks for the question. Scott, CVT's position on the Pompeo nomination?
Sure. First, hi, Rob. It's good to hear your voice, and thank you again for all the tremendous work I know you've been doing on these issues for a very long time. So I think your position and approach on Pompeo makes complete sense. I understand it. We have deep concerns about Mike Pompeo's record, not only on torture, but on refugees, on how he approaches Islam and terrorism, right, on a whole host of issues that I think are critical at the State Department, and his record raises red flags. We have made the formal decision at this point to oppose Haspel, but have not yet decided on Pompeo, in part because this is a very, as Pete mentioned at the outset, a kind of a very unique circumstance for CVT. We have only opposed a nominee twice in the organization's 30-plus-year history, and that was, that is now for Ms. Haspel and was previously for Stephen Bradbury, who was also an architect of, as you know, of the CIA's torture program. And given our organization's mission to try to heal the wounds of torture and prevent torture worldwide, individuals who've had an actual active participant role in torture are ones where that red line was so obviously crossed that we knew pretty much right away that these were nominations we would have to consider openly opposing. We are still having discussions internally about Mike Pompeo, and that may be something that Yasmeen can also add on to.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Yasmeen, if you had any comments on Rob's question, but also, we are opposing the Haspel nomination, and could you remind our listeners how they can help?
Sure, absolutely. So just really briefly on the Pompeo nomination, for, in case Rob isn't aware of the current efforts, there's, you know, a pretty broad coalition that is opposing his nomination. I mean, the best person for you to reach out to would be Stephen Miles and Sanjeev Adwan without war, for them to plug you into the efforts that they're doing. In terms of what, you know, folks on this call can do, again, to help us block Gina Haspel from becoming the next Director of the CIA, again, we need you to call both of your senators every single day until the confirmation hearings. That number, again, is 202-224-3121, for you to voice your concerns publicly at town halls, to visit with the staff, with your senators in their district offices, you know, this week and until they return from recess, which is the week of April 9th, and that's when we anticipate these hearings happening for Pompeo and Haspel. And also, if you are able to support the work of CVT with a generous donation, certainly CVT is going to be doing everything we possibly can to block Ms. Haspel from becoming the next CIA Director. We can help, we can certainly use your help in that effort.
Great. Thank you very much, Yasmeen. We've got about 15 minutes left and about 10 people on the line still. Let's go now to John Kraus in West Virginia. John, you've been waiting for quite some time here. Are you with us? And what is your question today?
Yes, I'm here. I'm wondering when former President George W. Bush will be held responsible for his sanctioning and approval of this. He's complicit in this, and all of the orders that Ms. Haspel says she was following really came from him.
All right, John, thank you very much for that call. Scott, I'll pitch that one to you if you'd like to address John's question.
Sure. Thanks, John. I guess I would address it this way. This is a process, if you look at, right, other countries that have gone through long periods of, and there's a distinction here between the US and these other countries, but I'll circle back to how I think they connect. Long periods of autocratic rule, disrespect for human rights, violence, things of that nature. The period for reconciling that, right, which is, you know, there's a field called transitional justice that addresses these issues. The timeframe for getting to a point of the kind of accountability your question gets to is often quite long, right? We're talking decades and decades, usually not shorter than that. So I don't think this is off the table, is the short answer to your question. But if we're going to get there in any meaningful way, things like Gina Haspel's nomination to be CIA Director are stepping blocks along the way. I find it hard to envision a scenario where accountability really runs as far up the chain for the CIA, post-9/11 CIA torture program, as it should, if Congress, the government, the American public aren't taking stepping block actions along the way. And I think, you know, making sure that Ms. Haspel is not confirmed to CIA Director is one of those small but critical stepping stones.
Thank you, Scott. In John's question, he used the phrase "obeying orders." And some of Ms. Haspel's supporters would say, "Well, she was just obeying orders. She was just being told what to do." I wonder if you could comment on this scenario and how you would respond or CVT would respond. If in the hearing, her confirmation hearing, she admits that she made mistakes and that what she did was wrong, and assures Congress that she would never let the CIA go down that road again, would that change your opinion or our opinion of whether she could be confirmed?
Thanks, Pete. So the short answer is no. And with respect to, quote unquote, "following orders," right, there is no command and responsibility, quote unquote, "following orders" defense to torture. Full stop. There simply isn't, as a matter of law. The reason this has at all become some sort of muddy discussion in the US is because there were legal opinions from the government reporting to authorize torture that was illegal, notwithstanding those opinions. With respect to how this question plays into Ms. Haspel's confirmation, I think she should be asked those questions and demanded to provide those assurances, because she's currently the Deputy Director at the CIA. And the reality is, if she doesn't get confirmed or if her nomination is withdrawn, she's probably going to stay in that role. And that role is not one that the Senate gets to weigh in on. That's one that she was appointed to. So she should make those commitments, for sure. But whether she makes those commitments or not, there is no way to confirm her, to vote for her, to promote her into the highest role at the CIA without endorsing the torture that she participated in the past and rewarding her for it. And that's a message that's going to be sent globally. And I don't think whether, whatever assurance she provides, if she does provide any such assurance in her confirmation process, should have an impact, I think, will have an impact on that, or should have an impact on whether senators are willing to endorse that kind of activity.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Let's go to another caller. Let's go to Mary Alice Shamo, calling from Plattsburgh, New York. Mary Alice, are you with us? And what is your question?
Yes, I am. And my question is, it just seems to me that destroying evidence is ipso facto, an admission that there's something to hide. In other words, there's some guilt there. And I also would like to comment that the Nuremberg Trials had something to say about following orders, namely, that if you're ordered to do something you know is wrong, your duty is not to obey, but your duty is to disobey.
Great. Thank you for the question and for reminding us of some of the lessons of Nuremberg. Scott, did you want to respond to her question?
Yes, and I would echo the thanks on raising the Nuremberg Principles, which, of course, answer that question without more. Yes, I think destroying that evidence is an admission of guilt. I think the argument we have heard from some former CIA officials who have been permitted to write books on this subject, while the information nonetheless remains classified, and these are supporters of the program, is that and these are supporters of the program, is that the tapes were destroyed to protect CIA agents' identities. The reality is, they were told by many in the administration, in positions above those responsible for the tapes destruction, not to do it. They were told by Congress not to do it. And I personally believe the only plausible explanation for doing it nonetheless is that were those tapes ever to have been seen by prosecutors, by congressional overseers, by the public, that there would have been both criminal consequences and public outcry the likes of which had not been seen around the program previously.
Great. Thank you, Scott. We've got a few minutes left. Let's go now to Lee Alvarez. Lee, are you with us and what is your question?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
What is your question?
My question is, will you be appealing to different organizations that had come out actively? American Psychiatric Association, the nurses, the social workers, maybe public health, they had come out after Abu Ghraib. Would you be appealing to them so that they have a presence in the committee room? And will you be approaching the American Psychological Association, which took 10 years to decide that, yes, indeed, it was torture? This would give the American Psychological Association a chance to fix up its image.
Thank you, Lee, and that image...
And this is serious. I'll just say one more thing. One more thing is, they had a convention, and I know this because I was, you know, I'm 96, but I was a psychologist. So, they had a convention in Hawaii, and they said, "Oh, yes, indeed, it seems to be torture." However, their results did not apply to the United States, probably protecting psychologists in prisons and so forth. But the fact is that they have finally agreed, yes, it's torture. So, and they have to be pushed.
Okay. Thank you, Lee. Scott, maybe you could begin a response by talking about some of the coalitions that we're involved with and other organizations that are with us on this issue, as well as others that we might reach out to.
Sure. And thanks for the question, Lee. I am very familiar with the long APA debate that you referenced. And we do, as Pete mentioned, work in coalition with several other organizations, including Physicians for Human Rights. And some of us are in the process now of trying to do outreach to, sort of broadly speaking, the medical and mental health communities, to try to get them to weigh in publicly on this issue. Some have to date. I think the voice needs to be much louder than it's been. I agree with you that they are a critical constituency. I think, as you probably know, and you sort of alluded to in your questions, it can be hard, at least at an associational organizational level, to get those kinds of groups to speak up. I think that is doubly so in the context of something like a nomination confirmation that people perceive to be a political issue, political questions. We are trying very hard to convince everyone we talk to that this is about torture. Torture is not a political issue. So we will continue to work to try to get those voices incorporated and incorporated loudly into this discussion.
Great. Thank you, Scott. We've got time for one or two more calls. Let's go to Bob in Chicago. Bob, are you with us and what is your question?
Yeah, my question had been about the ProPublica piece and when Gina Haspel began to be culpable in the Thai black site. I think you clarified that earlier.
Okay. Well, thank you. Then now, let's go to...
Pete, if I could just, sorry, Pete, I'm just going to quickly show one other piece of information on that. So, ProPublica stuck with its reporting that she was in Thailand at the site for the torture of at least one detainee. It remains unclear whether she had supervisory authority over that site for a much longer period of time. That is a possibility. That has been suggested in some reports. We won't know that for a fact unless and until the CIA declassifies more information.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Let's go now to Paul Rehm in Greenville, New York. Paul, what is your question?
Yes, Yacine had mentioned the vital need for calling our senators at their Washington office, and I wonder if you all would also advocate that we call the senators at their regional offices. So, calling Washington and then calling the office that's closest to us.
Great. Yasmeen, would you like to take that question?
Sure. I think doing both would be great, if you're able to also, if you're calling the regional or, yeah, a local office to encourage them to oppose her confirmation, if you're able to go into the office, if you're able to, you know, send emails to the staff in the regional offices, all of that is incredibly helpful.
That's great. So I think the answer is yes and all of the above. Let's go now to Mary Lund in Minnetonka, Minnesota. Mary, you have a question?
I do, yes. My question is, even if we are able to defeat this particular candidate, what can we expect on the next candidate unless we can counter the notion that there are circumstances in which torture is permitted and effective? Which seems to be out...
Which seems to be out there in the, in the public's mind in some cases. Scott, could you address that question? So, it's, you know, if we're able to defeat this one, what about the next one who comes along if that person is a pro-torture candidate?
Sure. So I think there's a sort of short-term answer to that and a long-term answer. I think the short-term answer is, if this nominee is defeated, it sends a signal back to the administration that this is an issue on which you can't send nominees to Congress because you won't get them through. And if she's defeated with a Republican-controlled Congress and a Republican White House, I think that's an awfully powerful signal and likely to screen out at least future nominees who have a degree of complicity in torture, you know, that looks like Ms. Haspel's. And unfortunately, there are others. The longer term, I think, is just, it is a continued public education campaign. And it's fighting up against, you know, Hollywood's image of what torture is and whether it works. It's fighting against popular understandings that are not well-informed by science, by the professionals who really do this work. So I think the education component needs to continue and continue in earnest, even when this is not an issue that dominates the news cycle.
We've got about one minute left. And so Elaine Nguyen in Minneapolis, Minnesota, could you give us your question pretty quickly?
Yes, I'm a psychologist. Steve, very involved in being aware of what the American Psychological Association was doing because its leadership in the early 2000s around the buildup to the Iraq War was to support torture. And there was a small group of people inside the organization that took it upon themselves to insist that we would get a hearing on this and we would, they wanted to have the people in leadership removed from leadership because they said they did not represent the base of the organization. Yes, indeed, that did happen. And in fact, one or two people were charged criminally and went to prison. It may have been one, and I'm not remembering correctly. But I wonder if you know of other organizations who brought leadership into question around this issue of torture?
Okay. Thank you for that question, Elaine. Scott, maybe if you could briefly talk about the Mitchell and Jessen trial, and then I think we're going to have to wrap it up.
Thanks, Pete. So, the most, the biggest, sort of most obvious, most public effort at this was not a criminal trial, because generally speaking, for at least the CIA side of things, criminal accountability has been essentially nonexistent. But the two primary architects of the torture program, Bruce Jessen and James Mitchell, were sued civilly by the, by a set of plaintiffs who were subject to their abuse and with the help of the ACLU. And that case got further than any one has gotten previously and ended up settling with Mitchell and Jessen making a payment. We don't know the terms of the settlement. They are confidential. But we assumed, right, some significant payment to the victims and, I think, you know, potentially a series of other conditions on that, including a, and a mission slash apology of sorts, I think, one that is in some ways deeply dissatisfying, but something along those lines.
Great. Thank you, Scott. We've come to the end of our time together, and so on behalf of all of us at the Center for Victims of Torture, thank you for joining today's town hall meeting on the Gina Haspel nomination. Please do take a moment to call your United States senators at 202-224-3121. And if, please do, if you would like to receive our e-newsletter or make a contribution to support our work, press star six right now. Thanks very much to Scott Rehm and Yasmeen Tab from CBT's Washington office, and thanks again to all of you on the call for all you do to support CBT's important work. Goodbye.